All right. Good evening, everybody. Welcome to the commission meeting for Tuesday, September thirteenth. And we do all try me in the pledge of allegiance place.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Roll call please, Mr. McGill.
Thank you, Mr. President. Commissioner Grelle.
President.
Commissioner Ranny.
Here.
Commissioner Silverman.
Here.
And Commissioner Flynn.
President. And first item on the agenda this evening is the manager's announcements followed by the community highlights.
Thank you, Mr. President. Earlier tonight, the commission met in discussion session and received information and discussed the following items. We reviewed and discussed, excuse me, a resolution regarding diversity, equity, and inclusion. We continue to discussion regarding possible changes to the stormwater fee ordinance. We continue to discussion regarding the possible realignment of advisory boards, more about that over the coming weeks and months. And we actually had time to hear updates on the activities of our various municipal boards from their mission liaisons. Prior to that discussion session, the commission met an executive session to receive legal advice from solicitor. The next meeting of the commission will be held on Wednesday, September twenty eighth. Just note that is Wednesday, which is different from our normal Tuesday meeting date. That's due to Jewish holiday versus Shana, I believe.
That's correct.
So we were trying to be respectful of all of our residents and participants.
Thank you. I appreciate that. Absolutely.
So there are different ways the public can participate in our meetings. You can do so in person. You don't need to pre-register, simply show up at the appropriate meeting time. And you can also participate remotely via Zoom webinar format. Again, you don't need to pre-register, simply click the link located on the meeting agenda on municipal website. And if you wish to speak during the citizens' comments or during public hearings, simply use the raise hand feature on Zoom and you'll be notified when it is your turn to speak. That's all I have.
Thank you, Mr. McGill. Commissioner Silverman?
Thank you, Mr. President. Mount Lebanon is updating our useful ten-year comprehensive plan. We've launched a new site to facilitate public engagement with a new survey and mapping feature to collect feedback and ideas on the future of the community. We're seeking input from all residents, property owners, business owners, and people who visit Mount Lebanon. Please visit Ascend Levo, A S C N D L E V O dot com to participate in this important process. This is the ninetieth anniversary of the Mount Lebanon Public Library and September seventh, September is the seventh annual Love Your Library campaign. This year's celebration will include a variety of ways to support the library, from a donation drive, tote bags, the T-shirts to purchase, free Love Your Library buttons, and a limited number of free yard signs to display in your yard, plus an array of wonderful programs put together by our exceptional staff of librarians. Thanks to the very generous support of the Jack Buncher Foundation, every gift up to five hundred dollars made to Mount Lebanon Public Library during the month of September will be matched, donated to the library webpage at mountlebanenlibrary.org. Each year, Americans observe National Hispanic Heritage Month from September fifteenth to October fifteenth by celebrating the contributions and importance of Hispanics and Latinos to the United States and those American citizens whose ancestors came from Spain, Mexico, the Caribbean, Central America, and South America. This year's observance theme is Unidos, inclusivity for a stronger nation. The theme encourages us to ensure that all voices are represented and welcome to help build strong communities and a stronger nation. We are grateful for all your contributions. Thank you for making Mount Lebanon a better place. Finally, keep up to date with the progress and schedule for the vibrant uptown streetscape project at mountlebanen.org/vibrantuptown.
Thank you, Commissioner Silverman. Next up on the agenda, we are excited to welcome our new junior commissioner, Amy Tan.
Thank you, Commissioner. Good evening. My name is Amy Tan, and I am a senior at Mount Lebanon High School. I'm excited and honored to serve as Mount Lebanon's junior commissioner for the fall semester. I would like to begin my report with a brief update on high school activities. So far, the school year has been off to a steady start. Some annual Mountain Lebanon traditions are coming around during this time of year, such as the senior boat ride, which was this past Sunday, and it was a big success. Homecoming court nominations are also coming in, and the senior class student council has recently made adjustments to make the homecoming court titles more inclusive and gender neutral. Next, the majority of high school clubs will begin their activities for the school year, following the upcoming activities fair. But many clubs have already begun to do some significant work. The Global Studies Program has been helping new international students transition to the high school, and Link Crew and Connections Club have been making a welcoming environment for freshmen and new students. Forging these connections will build a stronger community at the high school, which also brings me to the second part of my report. When I was applying for the junior commissioner position, I was especially interested in strengthening the connection between the high school and the community. My interest increased even more when I arrived for the junior board member orientation and learned that some interesting community initiatives that I was completely unaware of. With efforts from both the community and the municipality, I hope that we can make these resources more well-known and also increase overall civic engagement, especially from the below twenty-five demographic. As someone who is part of this demographic and also a student at the high school, I want to emphasize the power and influence of social media and technology. At the high school, most of our activities are shared on some form of social media. Each class's student council has an initiative to promote upcoming events and fundraisers. Many of our high school clubs and sports teams have their own Instagram pages as well, but most are not affiliated directly with the high school. Even though the pages are unofficial, they are still a great way for students to engage with their activities and make others aware of what they are doing. Of course, there are dangers to social media, and it can be challenging to find a social media model that is both appropriate and engaging. However, as social media and technology become more and more prevalent in our lives, understanding and using social media as a tool will be crucial to reaching more demographics. I follow the Mount Lebanon Magazine on Instagram. It is an informational page. I think that there can definitely be more initiatives taken to improve the municipality's social media outreach. I also see these areas of improvements as opportunities to engage more community members from different ages and backgrounds. Since social media is supposed to reach a variety of people, then perhaps it can be effective to have a diverse team or board manage and specialize in social media outreach. I'm excited to learn more about our municipality and our community and how we can become stronger together. This concludes my report, and thank you for your time.
Thank you very much. We really appreciate your being here, and that was actually very insightful. I think that this is a topic that, again, to be brief, technology has obviously been evolving very rapidly over the last twenty years, and local governments in general, I would say that Mount Lebanon has done a very good job compared to many, but we have a lot to learn. So I am looking forward to seeing how you progress with this and how we think more broadly about engaging different demographics with social media and with technology in general. But I really appreciate your engagement. I think the whole commission is excited to see you participate in the forward. So thank you very much. All right. Next up on the agenda this evening is citizens' comments. This is an opportunity for any resident to express an opinion on any topic pertaining to local government. The commission enjoys hearing from the public on various issues and learning about items to address in the future. If you have specific questions, we will try to answer them at the end of your comments. If we can't, we commit to getting you the answers as soon as possible. When I call your name, please come to the podium to address the commission. State your name and address for the record. In fairness, we ask each speaker to share their thoughts for five minutes. The community is as good as each person in this room. We work together to make this a community that we can all be proud of, and we hope that the dialogue remains respectful. We also appreciate the audience's efforts to refrain from any behavior that is disruptive or might intimidate free speech. And with that, first up this evening is Ms. Hillary Lord.
Hi, Hillary Laura, Seven Hemlock. I'm here to talk about the Ascend Levo survey. So I will preface the remarks with saying I had some good conversations with a few of you. I appreciate that the municipality, Ian McMeans, reached out, you know, to have a conversation about the survey, about what the plans are moving forward. I think working together as a community is always a good thing. So I do appreciate that. But before people take this survey, I've spoken to people. There's been many conversations that have gone on since we first saw this, and I think the last time I was here, I talked about perception. Maybe that's why it wasn't necessary that there was a problem, but it was a perception. And the survey, again, I think is a little bit of a perception issue by the way that some of the questions were worded, what the answers are, and maybe the fact that there wasn't too much of an opportunity for a follow-up question on the survey, examples such as. And for anyone who hasn't seen the survey, you answer in a strongly disagree to strongly agree format. So it starts off with Mount Lebanon needs dog park. Well, I love dogs. Anyone knows me. We love dogs. And it's a very easy one when you're answering the survey to answer, well, yeah, sure, that's a great idea. But then I encourage everyone to sit back and think about it a little bit. Well, what if they choose your neighborhood park for the dog park? There will be traffic. There will be, you know, some other things to consider. So again, anyone can answer yes, anyone can answer no, but I encourage people when they're taking the survey to think about it a little bit in terms of if this happened and if this happened close to your home, how would it affect you? Something like another question, reconfiguring our streets to increase safety and comfort for cyclists is important, even if it requires the conversion of some streets to one-way traffic only. Well, I don't think anyone would disagree. Cyclists should feel safe along the roads. That's an absolute. But think about it a little bit further. What if it's your street, or what if it's the street next to you and your street then becomes the alternative route for the traffic going the other direction? These questions require some real thought into that. Strongly disagree to strongly agree. You really need all five options that are in there because there are a lot of opportunities to think about how this will affect you, your neighbors, your kids, your parents, you know, and anyone who lives in the community. It will affect everyone differently. One question, people of all income levels should be able to find a place to live in Mount Lebanon. Well, that's a good thought, but I'd like a place on Central Park West, Beverly Hills. I'd really like a home in the Gold Note Community by Disney World, but I can't afford it. That does not mean that those communities should tear down their infrastructure and change their whole identity for me. It means that that is not something that's for me right now in my life. And everyone needs to make decisions as they're moving through their life, as they're going through their income levels, what their family needs, what the schools are, what the community offers. There are a lot of options there. One that really does affect, it's affected Dormont significantly. The redevelopment of a residential site in Mount Lebanon should result in an equal or greater number of housing units than were there previously. Dormont changed some zoning recently, and if let's you know the backstory on this, you might not understand this question. Dormont has created zoning where you cannot tear down a home and build a single-family home. You have to make it multifamily. And there's even an option to put retail in the lower level. So picture your street, picture your neighbor tearing down their home. Maybe they just, they sold it. Someone comes in, puts a four-unit apartment building, and then they decide to put a shop in the lower level. How will that affect the infrastructure in your neighborhood? How will that affect traffic? How will that affect the kids? How will that affect bike riding? All these things with these questions seem like very quick, click, click, click answers, and they're not very quick, click, click, click answers. There is a lot more to it. You know, some of the questions are talking about being within twenty minutes of a grocery store, but it doesn't give the option for driving your own car. It says if you walk or bike or take public transportation. That doesn't work if you have toddlers. That doesn't need to go to the grocery store. That doesn't help if you are infirmed in any way. That doesn't, having a grocery store twenty minutes away to walk to, and you have seven bags. When you leave the grocery store, that doesn't seem ideal. So it's not that some of these are not ideas to pursue, think about, and figure out, but there's something that I hope, I understand that this is a very preliminary survey, but I hope that the people taking the survey at ascendlevo.com, I hope they really think about how the answers are going to affect them and affect the others in the community, and I am happy to speak with anyone about it, and I'm happy to help with strategic plan. Very important for Mount Lebanon and very important for the community to be involved. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Laura. And I would just encourage everybody, again, whether you like the questions, don't like the questions, engaging in this process is extremely important. We want your opinions. Whether you like something or don't like something, again, everybody engaging in this process is so critical to building the community that we want to be, right? And as Ms. Laura pointed out, a lot of these changes are very incremental, but engaging in a process around vision is a community process. This is something that, again, is going to be a long-term process. We are working on it through multiple stages. Each step moves us forward, but your participation really is important. So we look forward to as much participation as we can get, whether you're a long-term resident or high school students. Everybody should participate, yeah, if they can. So thank you very much. Next up on the agenda is Dr. Huhn.
Bill Huns, four, five, six Coolidge Avenue. I don't know how many of you get the Post Gazette with a recent issue, July seventeenth this year. Another article on gardening with deer. And it featured a woman who actually has three gardens in Butler County. She's big in the gardening club, Butler County Garden Club. And both she and all these other folks that have written articles, including the research articles, indicate there's absolutely no need to kill deer, preserve gardens, shrubbery, all that garbage. Not that I'm against that. I have property in Washington County, and I had always put a garden in there when I was living there also. Quite to say that's a futile activity, waste of time, and highly immoral. As to this survey, where are we going? You know what? The people in my group, Friends of the Earth, have been talking to you folks for eighteen years. And we know we were one hundred percent ignored during the Logan years. Some of you guys seem to pay a little attention, but all of the folks in my group have said, Mount Lebanon is a waste of time. We're going to live our lives in other ways. We will continue to do the research and provide the information. So that's where there's a big chunk of the community that just doesn't give a damn anymore because they've been pounded around and ignored for almost two decades. I was talking to a local politician, gave me some interesting information that I wasn't aware of. First off, I started the conversation saying that I know of two multimillionaires who just decided Mount Lebanon is not it. And one of them definitely thought shooting in the neighborhoods was not something that made him comfortable. Two millionaires, multimillionaires moved out of Mount Lebanon. And he said, well, geez, in two thousand and seven, thirty-one millionaires left Mount Lebanon. These are people that have money. Many of them have jobs that they can focus elsewhere. And I was also quite surprised with something else he said about this. Thirty-one millionaires. That to me is staggering. He said, where do you think they went? I said Florida at first. Now, he said, yeah, a few. But most of them right around this area. They didn't move anywhere. They moved out of Mount Lebanon because Mount Lebanon no longer suited their interests, their needs, their desires. You know, these people have money. They can pick up and move any day of the week. And guess what? These folks haven't been replaced. There haven't been more millionaires move into Mount Lebanon. Then I move to something else. Through our group, the Friends of the Earth, there are a lot of very educated people. Mount Lebanon lost three PhDs that we know of in the two thousand and six to two thousand and seven timeframe. They haven't been replaced either. A lot of these folks that I'm talking about got steam because you guys think firing around the neighborhoods is just fine. Well, that doesn't fit in with the lifestyle that a lot of people have. And if you ask me, where are we going? Well, we've been to hell and back here. And it looks like you want to keep right on marching down the road. And to hell with everybody that has any other interests. Do you want to have somebody firing in your backyard or in your neighbor's backyard? Let your dog out. Let your kids out. And that's crap. And it's nothing to you. There's no problem. Go ahead and live with it or get the hell out. That's a sterling community, guys. Just love it.
Next up this evening is Mr. Dave Lackner.
Well, this is my first time do a meeting like this. I've never been to a school board meeting. I've never been to commissioners' meeting. My name's Dave Lackner. I live at seven twenty-nine Bradfordton Drive. I do have a few questions. I received this comprehensive plan called Ascend Levo from another Mount Lebanon resident. I guess my first question, was this survey mailed to all the Mount Lebanon residents?
I do not believe so.
Is there a reason why it wasn't?
I'm going to defer to Mr. McMeans as our municipal planner, who's actually in charge of the comprehensive plan, to provide a response.
So since you're on the phone, I want you to ask your question.
Okay. And then there was a, in section one refers to the initial survey of the project was this mail as well. There's some commentary regarding people of all incomes should be able to find a place in Mount Lebanon. So we already have a diverse range of housing options. I think after looking at the survey, you know, there's some things that, you know, we can't conclude. We can't conclude whether this implementation of the Ascend Levo will actually be successful and help the residents of Mount Lebanon. What we do know is a simple fact that's undisputed. Mount Lebanon already has a thriving community, shops, restaurant, entertainment. We have a diverse range of housing options, apartments, senior living. We have a good school system. We have thriving real estate. Real estate is probably better than it ever has been, and it's a friendly community. So I guess the million-dollar question is, why would you want to change this? Is there any response?
I would.
To Mr. McMeans' point, we were trying to let you ask all your questions.
Okay, I'm done. I'm done.
Just so the mic can pick us up so our large studio audience can hear us. So Ian McMeans, Assistant Municipal Manager and Municipal Planner, also the staff lead for the Comprehensive Plan Project. So to the question, was this survey mailed out? No, it wasn't. This survey right now that's out was just launched last week. We launched the ascendlevo.com website with new branding and everything for the plan that was part of the deliverables from our comprehensive plan consultants. And we're kind of doing a slow rollout with this, that we just sort of launched it online. We're going to be going to community events to promote it. We're going to be putting flyers out in the business districts and at the library and attending football games and other, you know, the Halloween parade, some other community events to try and get the word out there about the survey, the mapping tool, to try and get people to engage with this, to go online to fill it out. It is an online survey because there is the mapping component as well. It works on your phone or on your computer. And, you know, you can go to the library and fill it out as well on the computers there. So it is kind of a slow rollout right now. We're going to be, at this point, like, we kind of just put out a Levo alert and put it on our social media stuff, but within the next week, I'm going to be reaching out to all of our advisory boards to encourage them to push it out to their contacts within the community. I think that I had given the commissioners a little blurb this week on, you know, if you want to send it out to your contacts as well. So we're really just in the very initial stages of launching this survey, and there will be things in Mount Lebanon Magazine about it as well, and the magazine does get mailed out to every household in the community. So the survey itself, no, it won't be mailed out to every household, but the magazine will, and we'll be going out to community events. One of the ideas of the public engagement is to try and meet people where they are, rather than, you know, trying to do the typical planning thing of bringing people to a focus group meeting in the municipal building. We're trying to go out to these community events and talk to people and get them to engage with the plan. The initial survey that you mentioned was basically just a two-question survey that we had launched initially. And the questions were, what do you like most about Mount Lebanon, and what would you like to see change in Mount Lebanon? We got about nine hundred responses to that survey, and just from those three responses, there was a lot of ideas thrown out there about things people like, things people didn't like. So some of those things that we heard back in that initial survey kind of found their way into this one, which is, I'll say, the second survey in the process, but the whole comprehensive planning process is an eighteen-month process. So our goal is to have the final plan done by December of two thousand and twenty-three. So we're still very early in the process of doing it and getting out there. This survey now with the Ascend Levo will probably be open through at least the end of November, possibly the end of the year. So we're really trying to get as much engagement with it as we can. And we're very early. So some of those questions, what we're really trying to do right now, and to Ms. Laura's comments as well, is test ideas. That, you know, these are some ideas that we heard in that initial survey. So it's really important to us as the municipality for people to take the survey and to tell us if you agree, if you disagree. It's just as important to say you disagree as it is to say you agree, because if there's things in there that people don't like, we need to know about that now at the beginning of the process, rather than getting the whole way through an eighteen-month process and then have people come out and say, well, these are terrible ideas. We hate them all. We want to hear that now at the very beginning of the process. So that's why it's really important to try and get as much engagement with the process as we can, to hear those responses to the ideas that are in the survey. And then to answer the question about why are we looking to change? So there's two responses. There, the first is that by the Pennsylvania Municipality's Planning Code, we're required to update our comprehensive plan every ten years. The last one was approved in two thousand and thirteen, so the next one needs to be approved in two thousand and twenty-three. So that's why we kind of started the process right now. And the comprehensive plan is kind of the ten-year plan that sets the overall goals and objectives for the municipality. And those goals and objectives directly tie into our capital improvement program. So if you look at our capital improvement plan, each project in the plan right now says this plan works towards accomplishing this goal in the comprehensive plan. So the comp plan, the goals that get into the comp plan then help dictate what the municipality is going to spend money on as far as big projects over the next decade. Like, one of the things in the last one was renovate the pool, and the pool project got done. So things like that, that are big community projects, get into the plan, and it helps inform our spending. And then the final comment is that for us as a community, we like to see ourselves, as you mentioned, as, you know, one of the premier communities. That for us as a community, we like to see ourselves, as, as you mentioned, as, you know, one of the premier communities, not only in Allegheny County, but in Western Pennsylvania. And um, to get back to our junior commissioners' comments about delving into social media and things like that. If we don't continually adapt to the new things that are coming, we're going to get left behind by other communities that are adapting and are embracing these new things. So. We need to make sure that we're, we're continually evolving and have that culture of continuous improvement, whether it be something small like broadening our social media presence. Or, you know, something larger like, you know, just considering, um, you know, the, the way people move from place to place. So. Um, but these are all ideas right now that we're testing. Nothing is set in stone and we really need to get that feedback from the community. And we really want it to be the community's plan. So that's why we're, we're really encouraging people, um, you know. Commissioner Silverman and his report and then Commissioner Flynn's comment both encourage people to go out and take the survey. And so we'd encourage you to, to share the survey with people and, and try and get people to take the survey and give us their feedback.
I do have one or two more comments and I appreciate your commentary. There, there's one portion that I think it has been left out. There's a large percentage of mountain residents or senior citizens. They might not even subscribe to that magazine that you're talking about, Mountain Lebanon Magazine. Okay. 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 So is there any particular reason why we couldn't put this survey and mail it with a tax bill? Because they're getting a tax bill, right, from the municipality? Is there any reason why we can't be inclusive and make sure that everybody gets this survey? That's why, that way, nobody stands up at the 10th hour and says, hey, you know what? I never got the survey. I just want, I think we ought to be inclusive.
I, no, I, and, and I appreciate where you're going. I want to wrap, you know, your time, but I will say that I, I respect you where you're coming from in terms of communication. Um, and we will definitely talk to the consultants about at what stages we're making sure that we are truly getting this out to as many people as possible through various means. It might not be digital because that might not be accessible to, to all the residents. It's, it's a, it's a fair point and I think that's something that, that we can, we can consider.
Okay. Uh, you maybe bring up the same point about so far the feedback we've received to this survey, this plan is more than the previous one. So we still have more communication to go, but it just, again, more and more outreach to get more and more input. Uh, for people and so far, we're out of the pace of 10 years ago, uh, of getting feedback from the community. So we're, we're trying to keep working to that goal.
Okay, all right, one more thing.
Yes. One, one, one more quick comment. So, um, when we did the Parks Master Plan Survey last year, we did three separate surveys as part of that project. Um, the response rate from seniors on that was about eight to nine percent per survey. Um, so far in both the surveys we've done so far, um, for the comprehensive plan, the initial one in this follow-up, we've had about 25% participation from 65 and older. Cause there is a question on there, like, what's your age range? Um, so that 25% does match up with the census demographics of the community. So I feel like we're doing a, a pretty good job right now of getting those responses from seniors on this comp plan survey. Um, and when we did the communications study, um, in 2019, it was, I think, we did mail that out to every household and the. Uh, postage cost was about eight to $9,000 to mail that out to every household. So, uh, that's a, a cost.
Fa- factors to consider, but your point is well taken, that we need to be.
I'm happy to chat with uh, Mr. Lackner uh, later on in the week to. Uh, address any of his additional concerns that we could then bring to the commission and, and the staff after that. If, if you're on Bradford and I'm happy to chat with you.
Mr. Lackner. Thank you for your comments.
Thank you.
All right, uh, next up on the agenda. Uh, item number four, Commissioner Silverman, please.
Thank you, Mr. President. Consideration of the minutes from the regular meeting held August 9th, 2022, I move to approve the minutes.
Do you have a second?
Second.
Moving to seconded, all those in favor?
Aye. Aye.
All right, motion carries. Item number five on the agenda, Commissioner Ranny, please.
Thank you, Mr. President. Consideration of Resolution Number R dash 21 dash 22. A resolution of Mount Lebanon, Pennsylvania fostering diversity, equity, inclusion and belonging. The municipality of Mount Lebanon has at the heart of its vision and mission, a commitment to help create a community of belonging. Where all are welcomed, included and celebrated, and the municipality recognizes diversity, inclusion and equity as essential to a positive and healthy community. This resolution commits to the municipal, commits the municipality to diversity, equity and inclusion, known as DEI. And doing its part to create a culture of belonging throughout the community. We understand DEI as valuing and learning from the broad range of human differences as well as our similarities. Advancing equal opportunities for all people in groups to thrive and building a warmly receptive and supportive community for diverse perspectives and experiences. Um, I move to adopt Resolution Number R dash 21 dash 22.
Seconds.
All right, it's been moved and seconded. Are there questions or comments?
I would like to add that the full resolution is available on the, on this agenda as a link if you go online to the meeting agenda.
Uh, and we would also, I think, all like to thank Commissioner Foster for all of her efforts um, with the DEI initiative. Uh, she really shepherded this process along uh, from its initiation uh, to crafting uh, the, the vast bulk of. Uh, the resolution before us. So we appreciate her effort, even though she can't be here to see its culmination. Uh, so, uh. Unless there are other comments or questions? All those in favor?
Aye.
All right, motion carries. Item number six on the agenda, Commissioner Corello, please.
Thank you, Mr. President. I do not want to do this line item, but I will do it anyway. Consideration of the acceptance of the resignation of Commissioner Foster. Commissioner Foster has tendered her resignation as, as a result of a relocation of her residence. The commission will reluctantly accept her resignation and declare her office vacant as of today. I move to accept the resignation of Commissioner Foster and to declare the office vacant.
Second.
The movement is seconded, all those in favor?
Whoa, 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 comments and questions.
The comments, I apologize. I didn't want to tear up, I apologize.
I know. Um, well, I will go. I personally really enjoyed working with Commissioner Foster and learned a lot from her leadership. Um, over the two years and eight months that she was with us, she did more than a full four-year term in terms of how much she was able to accomplish. She served during the pandemic and helped serve and support our residents along with the rest of the commission and the municipality. And how to best navigate that ever-changing landscape of, um. I'll just leave it at that. Um, she's been critical as her role on the library board. She's also led as the, or spent the commission liaison on the CRB. And init- helped initiate our DEI initiatives and saw some of those through. And she helped guide Merza through finding its new leadership. And, um. I personally will, will really miss working with Commissioner Foster. And I know the residents, um, probably only see a small portion of what she contributed, but she, she really, really contributed a lot. So I want to thank her.
Thank you, Commissioner Ranny. Commissioner Silverman?
Yeah, we will miss Commissioner Fos- Foster's thoughtful. Uh, deliberations. She's been an asset to the team and. We're sorry to see her go. Wish her all the best in her new, uh, with the family, uh, but she will be missed.
Yeah, there, there's so much that, uh, many members of the public will not know how much that Leanne has helped them. Uh, Mindy mentioned things like the pandemic, a lot of things that were. Uh, discussed in, in executive session and her public votes and her constant advocacy for the residents of her ward. Literally from day one, even before day one, we were out in the streets. Trying to help residents that, that had issues that they had brought to her. Um, a staunch advocate for her residents and a lot of the policies she's put in place here will, will carry on and I think have already made the municipality a better place. So. She's so smart, we're really going to miss her. I'm going to miss her. Um. Uh, a lot of her recommendations, she had no problem speaking truth to power, had no problem. Raising her voice when she felt it was the right thing to do, even when it was not the popular thing to do. And I so appreciate having that voice in our discussions. Uh, it is definitely needed and it, and it will be missed.
I will just say that I agree with every, all the comments. Um, I wish Commissioner Foster and her family the best and her new community uh, is lucky to have her. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All right, that's a, uh, if the eye there.
Yeah, I want to oppose it.
I speak for commissioners, these are reluctant, yes, yes.
Right, but that won't do us any good. So I'll go ahead and with the I.
All right. Item number seven on the agenda, Commissioner Silverman, please.
Thank you, Mr. President. Consideration to ratify the manager's approval of emergency repairs to the Recreation Center Ice Spring Refrigeration System. Emergency repairs to municipal ice spring refrigeration system in the amount of $52,125. Were necessary for continued provision of related services. The urgency and the timing of these repairs did not allow for the typical approval process. I move to ratify the manager's approval of emergency repairs for the ice spring refrigeration system, the amount of $52,125.
Second.
The movement is seconded, are there questions or comments? Hearing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries. Uh, item number eight, Commissioner Ranny, please.
Thank you, Mr. President. Consideration for the award of the North Garage Elevator Car Number One Modernization. Project documents and pricing were provided by Otis Elevator for the modernization of the elevator car number one and weather damaged components, which serves as the main parking garage structure. Initial discussions regarding the project were completed during the review of ARPA and unassigned fund allocations in late June of this year. Their proposal from Otis is as follows, and it is on the board in the commission chambers as well as the screen. The facilities coordinator recommends the project be awarded to Otis. The contractor has completed similar system upgrades in many other commercial settings in a satisfactory manner. And currently holds, that holds the maintenance contract on both parking garage structures, making them very familiar with the systems within the North Garage. This work falls under a national cooperative purchasing program, which has been cooperatively bid. OMNIA Contract Number 2019001563. The project is to be funded through ARPA and unassigned fund balance. I move to award the North Garage Elevator Car Number One Modernization Contract to Otis in the amount of $143,698.60. And the weather repairs in the amount of $110,803.46.
Second.
All right, it's been moved and seconded twice. Questions, comments? Hearing none, all those in favor?
Aye. Aye.
Motion carries. Item number nine on the agenda, Commissioner Corello.
Thank you, Mr. President. Consideration for the award of the Thornwood Drive Stream Restoration Project. Bids were received on August 16th, 2022 for the Thornwood Drive Stream Restoration Project Contract. Project consists of improvements to an existing stream and installation of in-stream structures, including log deflectors, single-wing log veins, root wads. Rock cross veins with and without step pools, log toe, rock waterfall, branch layering, shrub planting and ENS controls. The municipal manager has verified the bids as follows, and they are on the screen. The municipal engineer has reviewed the bids and determined the low bid to be accurate. The engineer recommends the project be awarded to Ecological Restoration, Inc. The contractor has completed similar work, including the Bird Park Stream Restoration Project in a satisfactory manner. The budgeted amount for this contract is $230,000 and the municipal engineer's estimate for the project was $175,000. The project is within budget and is to be funded through the Stormwater Fund. In addition to the stream restoration work, drainage improvements in the form of additional inlets will be added to the roadway. Under the Storm Sewer Point Repair Contract with Neando Construction at an est- estimated cost of $40,000. I move to award the Thornwood Drive Stream Restoration Project Contract to Ecological Restoration, Inc. in the amount of $106,880.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded, are there questions or comments? Hearing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Motion carries. And with that, we are adjourned. Thank you, everybody.
Are we doing second or are we doing that another time? Okay, thank you.
Well, I have another question.
Thank you and good night.
Good night.
Happy evening.